Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, February 17th. We're here at the High School Media Center. I'll read the agenda. The Chair reserves the right to call items on the agenda out of order. The times that are listed for items are approximate times and items may be reached earlier or later than the posted times. The listing of items is those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at the meeting at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So, 7:00 PM we have Citizens Input, Topics Not Reasonably Anticipated by the Chair forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. 7:05 Selectmen's Update. 7:15 PM we have a public hearing Fusion Five with Attorney Peter Clark for a discussion and vote of the alteration of premises. 7:25 Fusion Five Attorney Peter Clark, Vivek J Patel, a discussion to vote a new manager changing from Faguni Janak Patel to Vivek J Patel. 7:35 we have Attorney Mitchell Moore appearing for discussion and vote on the Foxborough Country Club new officers and directors. 7:45 the Board will discuss and vote on the Town Council RFP. 8:05 Bill Yukna will discuss and vote on the MSBA Statement of Interest of the Borough School. 8:15 there will be a discussion on the Forty-B Fisher Street Project Letter to the State. 8:25 there will be a vote by the Board on the dispatcher's contract. 8:30 the Board will discuss the Spring Warrant articles and at 8:35 Bill Keegan will provide us with a Town Manager update. John, can you read this?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So, our first item, Citizens Input. Are there any citizens out there who would like ... Okay. Thanks Larry. Okay, so we'll do a quick Selectmen's Update. I just want to take a minute to again thank the Public Safety Department, DPW, and all the town employees for all of their efforts to keep the town safe and keep everyone in town safe. There's been a lot of issues with roof problems and I have expert input from the folks next to me advising that calcium chloride in socks up on your roof is a good solution. So, but be careful and thanks again to all the employees for their hard work. Thank you. So, we're also going to have an update from David on a project that he's working on called Fox Cares. So, Dave?
So, Fox Cares is a group that was formed many, many years ago by some liquor license holders that kind of went by the wayside and based on the most recent hearings that we had, some of the former members decided to resurrect it. We had a meeting back in, I think it was early January and we had eight participants that actually showed up. Later on in January, towards the end of the month, we had a second meeting where they decided to really go full-tilt on this group. They had elections and at this second meeting, there was twenty-three liquor license holders that showed up. It's really a good thing. They're really embracing, I think, the message that we tried to convey. So, it's being spearheaded really by Ron Young from the Lafayette House and Jim Sivalinsky from Route One Liquors. Just want to acknowledge the officers. Ron Young from Lafayette House is President. Vivek Koka is the Vice President from the Renaissance. Tom Peruna is the Treasurer from Tabalino's and Ellen Davis is the Secretary from the Renaissance. And some of the things that they're going to be doing as a group, they're going to be performing self-compliance checks with a third party just to randomly go in into the establishments, make sure everybody is in compliance and if someone is not in compliance, they're going to bring it up at a meeting with their peers and discuss what had happened. Chief O'Leary is involved in this. He's also offered to get a local judge to talk to the group. The group is going to discuss trends in fake IDs and share information. They're going to be working with the schools to discuss the dangers of underage drinking and the drinking consequent ... I'm sorry, consequences of fake IDs. And more importantly, they're going to reach out to the parents. So, they're really embracing this. They want to be responsible servers and I'm really impressed with the commitment that all these people have showed. Our next meeting is the 25th of this month. So, I think there's some good things that have come out of the hearings most recently.
Thanks David.
Good stuff.
Okay, so we have a couple of minutes until the public hearing starts. Jenny, do you want to go through action items?
Action items, thanks. Okay, the first action item is in reference to the Foxborough Historical Commission about a donation. It's a donation from the Twenty-Eighth Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a fifty-dollar donation to the Foxborough Historical Commission from the Twenty-Eighth Massachusetts Volunteer Infantry and thank the Infantry for its donation.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is in reference to the Council on Aging and is also a donation. This is to implement the Aging Mastery Program in March 2015 from the Brigham and Women's Hospital Partners Healthcare. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a donation of one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars to the Council on Aging from Brigham and Women's Hospital slash Partners Healthcare to implement the Aging Mastery Program in March 2015 and thank Brigham and Women's for its donation.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The third one is regard to the Recreation Department. We have two appointments to the Playing Fields Committee and one appointment to the Board of Recreation. So, I'll do the two playing field appointments first. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Philip Thomas Jr. of Twelve Vernal Ave and Vincent Riccio of Forty-Eight Alden Street to the Playing Fields Committee for terms expiring May 1, 2015 and thank them for their willingness to serve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is the appointment of Valerie Marshall as the Concom Member of the Board of Recreation. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Valerie Marshall of Thirty-Eight Walnut Street as a Conservation Commission Member to the Board of Recreation for a term expiring on May 1, 2016 and thank her for her willingness to serve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the final one is, this is from the Wampanoag Road Runners. It was a race that was, we had originally approved and the race was supposed to be held on February 15th because due to the snow, it was, that date was canceled and they want to come back to have the race on March 8th. And just ...
Is March 8th going to be any better?
I don't know. Well, I have no ... I'm just reading. But I did want to make a comment that one of the things that someone had called and said they noticed this was on the agenda and what they would like to see in the future is if we approve any road races in the town, if we should require that they take their signs down as soon as the race is over. Because sometimes the signs are there for days and weeks and, you know, it says road closed and something like that. So, if we can, I don't know whether you, can you send a letter out for these people? But in the future, then can we add that as a condition of a license approval?
Sure.
Okay. So, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the change of date for the Wampanoag Road Runners Race from February 15, 2015 to March 8, 2015 due to snow issues.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, we have a couple of minutes before we start the public hearing for Fusion Five. Any other updates?
Just, I'll just say a couple of things as part of my report tonight, which I'll reemphasize later on this evening as well. But it's based, it's formulated, of course, and dealing with the fact that we have obviously received, you know, unprecedented number amount of snow, we continue to receive snow unfortunately in the forecast. But there are a couple of things of concern right now is the fact that there is a lot, an awful lot of snow packed on folks roofs, on homes, on businesses. And we really, I took a ride around town with the Fire Chief this past Sunday looking at homes all around Foxborough and I have to tell you, I'm really concerned with the amount of snow packed that's on roofs right now. So, that also with the size of the icicles hanging from people's eaves, that's extra weight that brings that, well, it will actually damage the house if the things are not taken off. So, however, some of them are so big that I wouldn't even venture to do it by yourself. I would actually ask for some professional help or some contracting help to make sure it's done so it doesn't damage the home. So, we are asking folks to really pay attention, close attention to that and take whatever action they can take. If you can't afford to get up there and get off and get up, have somebody go up there and take the snow off the roof, whatever you can do from the ground level, at least take some of the snow away from the drains, the outdoor drain systems, that's certainly helpful. But the extent that you can either just get some of that snow load off the roofs, especially if we're still continuing to get snow. The big concern of course is if the once it does get warmer, those, that snow load becomes much heavier. And that right now, while it's still cold, it's not as much of a concern, but if we do get a storm with rain in it, that will make it a lot worse and that we don't place for the water to go.
It might be a snow changing to rain on Sunday.
Yes, so we could be seeing that within the next week or two. Let's face it, I mean, it's getting, we're in mid, we're in mid-February right now. Days are getting longer and certainly the temperatures we do hope will moderate at some point. So, we are hoping that folks will pay close attention to that and do whatever actions they need to take to address that. We did see, of course, a major roof failure at the Foxborough Terminals this weekend. Two buildings, two of the six buildings that are there failed and we, plus we had a fire and a third, so, and that was all due to snow. So, we just want folks to really pay close attention to that at this point. Second thing, of course, that we want some help with is to clean out the hydrants around, in and around your homes. I know you hear that a lot, but it really is important because even with the fire at the Foxborough Terminals, they had to dig out around a hydrant to get access to the hydrant, which of course slowed the ability to fight the fire. So, we want folks to really pay close attention to that and to do a decent job. Don't just cover, uncover the top of it, actually clean out around the base and make sure that the, there's clear access to all the valves that are on the hydrant. So, we really appreciate everybody's help in doing that and certainly will be help to both the Water Department and the Fire Department in addressing those concerns. And you could be the one that actually needs access to that hydrant in your house. We hope it never happens, but you want, it's a good insurance policy to make sure you address that.
Bill, can I just, Chairman, can I just add? If you're a senior, if you call the Council on Aging, they have a program, it's not a free service, but if you need your decks shoveled or your steps, you call them. They've got contractors that have gone through the core checks and their license that they can give you their names and you can deal directly. But sometimes it's easier than calling the Yellow Pages or people that you don't know. So, Vicki Lo over at Council of Aging can help you.
Appreciate that.
Can you also make notice that, mention that the drop box at Town Hall is not in operation?
Right, we've had, we're not immune to the issues of the snow conditions and the ice. We've actually had some impact on the Town Hall building itself. So, we are, so we've actually had to take the outdoor service box out of, the outdoor drop-off areas out of service for the time being. We do hope to reinstitute that later on once the weather gets better. But right now, we're picking up water and ice into that slot, so we really would hope that people would either drop it in the mail or certainly drop it off in person at Town Hall. So, we apologize for inconvenience at this point, but we're not immune to it either unfortunately.
Thanks very much, Bill.
You're welcome.
Okay, so being 7:15, Jenny, can you read the public hearing notice, please?
Legal notice. The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Laws Chapter 138 will be holding a public hearing on Tuesday, February 17, 2015 at 7:15 PM at the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass on an application to alter the premise of an annual all-alcoholic beverages inholder license for Agnes Corporation DBA Fusion Five, 105 Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. Manager Faguni Janak Patel. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing.
Good evening, welcome. Can you state your names, please, for the record?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, my name is Peter Clark. I'm an attorney with an office at 200 Chauncey Street in Mansfield and I represent Agnes Corporation with respect, DBA Fusion Five, with respect to the matter before the Board. Before we proceed, if I could just add personally to the comments just made by the Town Manager and by Mr. DeValice, I actually had a Foxborough homeowner call my office this morning who has fallen victim to a scam artist that was offering ice removal, ice dam removal services. And the person came to their home, charged twenty-nine hundred dollars, actually quoted twenty-one hundred dollars and then increased while he was there the bill to twenty-nine hundred dollars for services to remove ice dam from a roof. He did so with an axe that caused damage to the roof shingles and roof material. So, I would, to what Mr. DeValice had to say, I would certainly, you know, if you're a senior, ask the Council on Aging for a referral. If you're an ordinary citizen, not only of Foxborough, but of the other towns around here that are facing a similar problem, call a reliable, no, a real roofing contractor, ask to see their license, you know, their contractor's license, ask to see their insurance. You know, it's unfortunate that there are a lot of people that are taking advantage of, those that are desperate at this point in time. So, just a side comment, I don't mean to take away from the public hearing, but I just wanted to add that since it was something that, a phone call that I got this morning when I walked in the door this morning. Ladies and gentlemen, we're here is a continuance or in essence where my clients appeared before you at the end of last year with respect to the Fusion Five, the hotel at 105 Washington Street with respect to a alteration of the premises. At the time, I made the promise to the Board that we would appear before you with a full application for an alteration of the premises. As you remember, what my clients have done is taken what was approximately four thousand square feet of bar and lounge and restaurant space, you know, attached to the hotel and have, in essence, cut that space in half, turning the, turning the remaining half into twelve additional hotel rooms. So, going from, going up to sixty-two hotel rooms as part of their plan to attract a new franchise flag, you know, in the coming months. So, what we have before you and I believe you have seen the, you saw the architectural sketch back when we appeared before you, before. And so, there is, there are no changes, you know, from that architectural sketch. The Building Commissioner has been following along the process and I believe that you have, I believe the Board has a memorandum from the Building Commissioner saying that it's been built in accordance with plan. He hasn't done the final sign-off yet, the final inspection yet. I think, I believe that's scheduled for later this week. But it has been built in accordance with the architectural drawings. We, my clients have the same number of fire exits that they had before. They are in, the direct exits to the outside are in the exact same location as they were before. That hasn't changed. The entrance off of the lobby has changed slightly. It's shown on the plan, but changed slightly from what it originally was, only that it's now located in, off of the hallway that serves the additional hotel rooms. If I can approach, I have some photographs for the Board that demonstrate what's occurred these events.
Yeah.
So ...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Drew?
Thank you.
So, you have, the picture on the top, the picture on the top is of the, behind the bar scene showing that the area, the next photograph is the open space, the hardwood floor area, excuse me, where the seating, where the tables will be, the tables and chairs are all pushed up against the wall. And the next picture, oh, excuse me, it's like a net picture, excuse me. The chairs are all there, they'll be spread out, you know, in that floor area. This photograph right here is this door to the right, can I just move this up a little bit? This door to the, right here is now the new doorway into the Fusion Five space and then you're looking down the corridor past all of the new hotel rooms and there's a, there's a new fire, new fire doors there into that corridor. So, there's three fire doors in the, you know, in the bar lounge space itself, one in the kitchen, one at the end, and then this one into the hallway. Excuse me, thank you.
Sure.
There are marked on the architectural plan by the asterisks. So, you have one there, one there, then you have the kitchen, there's a kitchen exit there. So, there are three means of degress in and out of the space which, that's compliant with the building codes. The occupancy, in terms of number of patrons, is actually going to drop by more than half as compared to what it had been previously. And that occupancy is driven by the building code because not only, you know, under square footage rules, they would actually be allowed to have slightly over two hundred people. But because there are a total of six restrooms, three male, three female, it's actually one eighty. So, you have to take the lower count, lower count of patrons based upon the number of number of working restrooms in the facility. So, that will, the occupancy count will be set forth in the occupancy permit that Mr. Casparra actually issues when he completes his inspection. In terms of the items that are remaining to be done, there's a few little punch list items. For example, today, the dishwasher sterilizer was being installed in the kitchen area that needed to be done and then the Board of Health will come out and do their final inspection. But my clients are very close to being ready to occupy the space. What we're hoping for is that the Board will approve the alteration of the premises this evening so that it can then go on to the next step for the ABCC to do their inspection and their sign-off. You have submitted to your offices, you know, the complete application with the, you know, all of the financial background information that the ABCC requires, they need to document the source of funds, we'll provide the bank statement. As the Board may remember, this is a family-held business, you know, owning the hotel and Fusion Five and that it was part of the Patel family has paid cash for all of these improvements and, you know, it's part of the renovations of the whole hotel and the new flag and then they'll be doing a corporate refinancing of the mortgage. I would actually probably anticipate coming back before you when that refinance is done because there'll be a change of pledge of the license from the current mortgage holder to the new lender. But that will be several months in the end. If, do you have, does the Board have any questions? This is only for the, we'll do the manager change separately. This is only for the hearing on the alteration of premises first.
So, you're saying that, oh, excuse me?
I was just going to say, so everybody knows in the packet that Debbie just gave us, there are two documents. One is the memo from Bill Casparra, Building Commissioner, revealing that the renovation is near completion and conforms with the plans on file with the Town. And the other one was to confirm the destruction of the liquor from the Fusion nightclub.
I was going to do that separately under the change of management.
Okay.
It's, I was trying to keep this right specific to the alteration.
That's fine, we'll just stick with this.
So, apart from some superficial paint, everything is in place? The bathrooms are in place?
Everything's in place, the bathroom's in place. You can see from the pictures, it's, you know, it's ninety-nine percent done, there's a, you know, as I was saying, a few touch-up things that still need to be complete, but it is substantially completed.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
No, it looks good, well put together. Thank you.
Do you have any change?
When do you anticipate getting your final inspections and applying for certificate of occupancy?
I believe the release is, Mr. Casparra is scheduled to come out to the property to do the occupancy. And then in terms of, we really can't control how quickly the ABCC does their things. We do not have a scheduled opening date as of yet. That will be ABCC-driven.
Thank you.
Questions, Jenny?
Madam Chair, just to refer everybody to the letter from Mr. Casparra indicating the status of the inspections. If anybody saw that, that was indicated that he's actually gone out and reviewed the property as of February 5th and said that everything looks to be acceptable from his perspective and that he's holding off on issuing the certificate of occupancy until the Board has taken its action.
The renovations look really very nice.
Mr. DeLuca was here in regard to this. Are you satisfied with the ...
Yeah, with respect to the application for alteration of permit, it's still within the Board's discretion, but the paperwork has finally come in order in that you've had an opportunity to review the proposed alterations, in fact, the alterations that occurred. And so long as you're comfortable with their ability to supervise and manage the altered premises, then it should meet, you know, your standard for licensing with respect to the alteration.
Okay. David, do you suggest that we should hear the next piece of it first and then vote?
Yeah, I think that would make sense, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this? All right, we'll go to the change in management.
Okay.
Should we continue this?
Yeah, I think you can suspend on this hearing and then move just to the next one.
I don't have a public notice.
For the second portion of this, we don't have a public notice, is that ...
No, that's fine because it was noticed as a pair.
Okay.
So, you suspend on this application, move to the next application.
Sorry for the, just in terms of privacy. So, again, members of the Board, which was, so the second part of this is ... so the second part of this is a change in manager from Val, Jessica Val, to her brother, Vic. You know, Val has been the manager of record for, I'm not sure, how many years?
Six years.
Six, you know, six, excuse me, six years. And has, has been on premises. But with a, you know, young child, the feeling that she had was that it would make more sense to turn the management, the day-to-day management of the license of the bar over to Vic, who is actually, you know, on site constantly. You have part of the application process that was submitted, the, you know, the goodness that you could run the query check. You know, he is well experienced in the hotel business. He's, you know, run and worked, you know, with America's Best Valley and the other hotels that the family owns and rent them since, you know, since his graduation from high school. And, you know, again, I think that the business community, the residents of Foxborough know Vic is being the one that, you know, is, you know, they, they're already, you know, business questions, anything that, you know, he's the go-to for this location. And it really just made more sense from a family standpoint that Vic be the manager of record.
Okay.
With respect to the, there was the question that, or the issue, going back to the original police department investigation, the middle of last year, there was a question, an issue with respect to the old inventory of liquor that had become, you know, contaminated, had been left open, had been exposed to, even though it was in a closet, had been become exposed to plaster dust and other debris during the construction. As this board requested, as we promised, that liquor was destroyed. It was done so under the auspices of Sergeant Noonan, who is, you know, one of the town's police officers, you know, who handles liquor matters for the town. It was, you know, he actually watched it happen. It was, you know, dumped into the, into a dumpster. He had, he parked his cruiser in such a way that he was able to, you know, we assume with the dashboard cam to actually witness the destruction. And there's a memorandum from the police department as part of your packets showing that liquor has been destroyed in accordance with the question.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do you have any questions of Vic, you know, is, who will be the new manager? He is, I can certainly attest that he's told me that he's probably gonna be there more than he's there now. So he's, you know, he's gonna be there, you know, more than 60 hours a week, which is not, you actually live there, you know, live at the hotel.
I do have an apartment that I stay on weekends instead of driving back and forth.
So, you know, he will be, he will be there. He will be, you know, available to the police department if there's an issue. He will be available to this board if there were ever an issue. And he will be responsive to the citizens of the town of Foxborough. And, you know, if you have any questions of him, with respect to his background and experience, you know, how he might handle, you know, handle something, you know, it will be, you know, he will stay up to date on his training. He will make sure the bartender and his staff, you know, have, you know, tech training. He will say, hey, he will be a good, good corporate citizen and a good license holder going forward.
Are you the manager of record in any other liquor licenses in the Commonwealth?
I am not.
You're not. This will be the only one?
Yes, it is.
The rental location does not have a liquor license. The rental hotel.
And have you ever had a, have you ever been the manager of record on another license?
I have not.
So this is the first time?
This is the first time.
Is there a quick question? When you look at the, on the building codes, on the occupancy, what's allowed per patrons and staff verse what's allowed because of the bathrooms is a 40, 44-person discrepancy. So you're gonna go with the lower?
Absolutely.
Number. How do you monitor that when you're talking over 200 people? Is it, with respect to the chairs and the tables?
Monitor people, the patrons that are inside?
You get a game event or a big event. How do you monitor?
Generally, we'll have somebody at the door that, you know, that check IDs. And we'll kind of, we'll keep account, the door gentleman will keep account of what we have coming in. And if, once we get a little closer to that 180 mark, you know, with whoever we have working there, we'll shut down. And it will do one in, one out. As people, if five people come in, if there's more people wanting to come in, we'll let, you know, five people come back.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did Dave have any input on this?
No, I think your board has the right intent here. You wanna check the depth of experience, make sure that there's a proper plan in place, that he's tip certified. We wanna make sure that all the employees will be similarly qualified, that he'll have the direct supervision. And most important, be available and responsive to the phone calls that could come from either the Foxborough Police or the Board of Select on these grounds.
May I suggest, if you haven't already, if you could get familiar with the Fox Care
organization that Dave had spoken about earlier?
Okay.
That would be helpful to you and, you know.
Sure. Absolutely.
Guess no one's asked about, ask, are you tip certified?
I am.
Have you been through training? Okay. So for the record, you are.
I am. Yes, I am.
All right. We're all set. Motion closed.
This isn't a hearing, right?
There are three votes that you should be considering. First, if you recall, from the end of November, there's a suspension in place with respect to this license. You'll need to vote whether you will release that suspension, put the license back into effect. Then second, the request to alter the premises. And third, the change in manager.
So we close the public hearing first?
You wanna close your public hearing first.
Yeah, okay. Just before we do that, anyone in the audience care to comment or ask questions? Okay, hearing done.
I move that we close the hearing in regard to Fusion Five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So why don't we take these in order then? The first vote would be to release the suspension that we placed on the liquor license at the first hearing?
Wouldn't it make sense to do that last since if we release it, there's nothing to release it to right now?
Yeah, I'd rather take it last.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay. So the next item was the alteration of premises. Any further discussion on that?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for alteration of premises for Agnes Corporation DBA Fusion Five at 105 Washington Street, Foxborough.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the last item is the change in manager. Or the second item now is the change in manager. Any further questions or discussions on that?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for change in manager to Vivek Patel for Fusion Five, 105 Washington Street, Foxborough.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the last item is the vote to release the suspension. Any discussion, comments, concerns?
Do we have to wait for Bill Casper to sign off on the occupancy before we do this?
Yeah, I agree. I think you wanna make sure that that vote be contingent upon the actual issuance of the certificate of occupancy.
That's a good idea. So we can dispatch with it tonight with that condition?
That's right, with that contingency.
And ABCC approval.
And ABCC approval.
Okay. Can you fit that in, Jenny?
Yeah. Well, you can help me. I move to release the suspension put on Fusion Five previously on the condition, conditionally that.
The Building Commissioner issues the certificate of occupancy.
The Building Commissioner issues the certificate of occupancy and what was the other?
And the ABCC.
And the ABC approves the change.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, yeah.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
There's a Fox Care meeting on February 25th.
David, I was actually supposed to discuss that with my client. I was, I had a conversation with the owner of the, the.
Lafayette House.
Lafayette House, excuse me. Thank you. So that's something I'll make sure that the hotels are aware of and take part in. Thank you.
Super.
Thank you. Good night.
Night. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the discussion vote on the Foxborough Country Club's new officers and directors, Attorney John Mitchellmore.
And given that I'm a member of the country club, I will recuse myself from this discussion.
Evening. I'm not even wearing the advertisement this weekend.
I'm advertising with confidence.
My name is John Mitchellmore. I'm representing Foxborough Country Club. This is a, essentially an administrative action. The board may remember that sometime last summer, there was an application for a change of manager at the country club. That meant, that application was submitted to the ABCC. At some time, it was kicked back because the, they had approved the person who was going to be the new manager. But for some reason, the application, or the cover letter for the application was signed by the then-president of the country club, who is not the president or the officer that was listed with the ABCC. So what they have required us to do is to resubmit that application with the new officers. The complication came up slightly is that due to the timing of it, the officers are elected every December. And so we now have the new officers with the queries, the background check applications for the next year. And so we're asking to approve the resubmission of the application with the new officers so that everything is correct. Basically, as simple as that.
Any questions for John? Comments? No? We're all set?
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the application for the appointment of new corporate officers for the Foxborough Country Club.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next agenda item is the discussion and vote on the Town Council RFP. So we had our interviews a number of weeks ago. And since then, we've all had the opportunity to read more about the proposals and check references and get more information on the finalists. The three law firms that are finalists are Lewison and Costello, Condon and Faff, Murphy, Hesse, Tumi and Lehane, and.
Blatman and Brabowski.
Blatman and Brabowski. So, who'd like to start the discussion?
I think I will. For those who watched the interviews, there were three very good law firms. All of them were capable. And it's, it's been on my mind all week, how do you, how do you make a decision on this? And it came down to really fit and sort of how they align with sort of the longer-term outlook of the Board of Selectmen. And it's, you know, they all, they all serve other towns. They all serve them well. They're all very well experienced. It is, it's really, it's a toss-up. But there was some, you know, during the interview, there was some answers to some of the questions on how they would engage issues and how they would support the position of the Board of Selectmen. So given that, I've, it's a tough call, but I've come down on the side of Costello and Lewison.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Yeah, over the last couple of weeks, I've also, I've checked the references, the different towns that they work in, actually some of the staff that work there. And I've known these firms in my career. And I think it's a case of not, you know, all the references and feedback that I got, as well as some of the department head staff, it was not so much, one was worse than the other by issues. It was, some firms were better than the other. There's really no negatives that I could, that I could really find. The principals that came here and the staff that came here were very well respected in their field. And I don't think there's one choice that we could make that is, is a bad choice. But I'm levitating towards Brabowski, Blatman and Brabowski and Mead. And the thing that distinguished them a little bit in my mind above the others was I think there was a little more passion in the presentation, a little more passion from some of the references that, that I got back. And I really, I liked the fee structure that they had proposed to us. If you look at pretty much all of the firms that, that are out there that, that are of the norm, it's based on, you know, almost tenth of an hour increments. And they've kind of stepped aside from that a little bit. And they gave you a choice of things that are included for a set amount. And if you break up that set amount per month, per hour, and the things that they include, all the legal work by the department, the partners, associates, and the attorneys of counsel, they will itemize it, but it's included. The defense of land use litigation for zoning, planning, boards of health, conservation, and all the stuff that, with respect to the bylaw, is included. They review the municipal contracts and procurements, the licensing matters, the stuff that goes on with the liquor licenses. They don't charge you for the paralegals. They don't charge you for the normal drudgery that you see down to paper clips. It's all kind of summarized as it's not our responsibility. There's certain things that they do not include, and I think it's reasonable. If they're working for reviewing a proposal or reviewing some work and the applicant is responsible, then obviously the applicant will pay them directly or they'll get reimbursed. And some of the tax work that they do is not included. But if you break down the rate, and they, you know, there's different steps in there, $7,000 a month or $5,500, if you break it down. And if it's managed properly and itemized, I think it's, it would be advantageous to Foxborough with the stuff that I see coming, the liquor license, the 40Bs, the, some of the legal issues we have with some of the issues we've been dealing with. And I think overall, I got a sense that they were very passionate. They knew it. They knew, they knew the area. They knew what we're dealing with. And I think they're very capable. So like I said, any, any three, I think I'd be happy with. But Blatman, Brabowski and Mead kind of went to the top for me.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. All three finalists were very good law firms. I think any one of them would do a very good job for the town of Foxborough. I did the, just like everyone else, I did the, after, after the interviews, I did inquiries. And everybody came back with the, you know, everyone had very good things to say about all the firms. However, I took the next step and I actually had coffee with one of the firms, one of the principals who would, who would be the town council, and discussed many issues that have faced the town of Foxborough that will be facing the town of Foxborough. And I just got a really good sense of the person's commitment to his position as town council. And I felt very comfortable being able to speak to him. And I just got a very, I think, I think this firm would be a very good fit for the town of Foxborough. So I'm, I'm in support of the Lewison and Costello town of Foxborough. So, I'm in support of the Lewison and Costello firm.
Thank you, Jenny.
Dave?
So, I guess we did a good job picking the three finalists, because any of the three would be a good choice. But I narrowed it down to two, and I went back and forth between Lewison and Costello and Blatman and Brabowski and Mead. And I think the final straw for me was just the passion that Jay Tallerman had and some of the feedback I got on him. And Lisa Mead was very impressive. Her stint as a former mayor kind of, you know, puts her on both sides of the table. Their flexible billing options, their consideration for office hours and their training. I'm going to recommend Blatman, Brabowski and Mead.
Thanks, David.
This is getting interesting.
Yeah, so, so I went through the same process and actually narrowed it down to two, and the two that I was, looked at more in depth were Murphy, Hesse, Toomey and Lehane and Lewison and Costello. So, you know, after, both of them got very good references. After looking at and hearing about the good services that they provided, I went back to really what I looked at as a fit for the town and an eye for our future also, and I had a good sense from Lewison and Costello that I thought that they would really be able to move us forward in the right direction with good support. One thing I wanted to bring up, though, is that I really do find that the counsel we've received from David DeLuca is terrific for liquor license. And so I would want to suggest to the board that we consider retaining him as special counsel for any liquor license matters. I think he's really served the town well.
Would we also consider retaining Leo Pelican for labor counsel?
Oh, yes.
It's not part of this process anyways.
Okay, so that's a given.
It's a given.
So, anyway, to sum it up, I would like to see Lewison and Costello be our town council for all matters, and then consider continuing to use David DeLuca's services from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey and Lehane. It was a very difficult decision. Each one of the groups had different aspects about them that were very strong, so we're very fortunate to have this problem, to pick such a good, you know, to have so many good firms to choose from, so.
So, is that your suggestion that we continue to use Dave DeLuca?
That would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if we need to have a separate agenda item to discuss that, I don't know if.
Well, it's still town council. I mean, it's all one.
Okay.
You're free to choose it in any way. You can mix and match, that's your option.
Any other comments?
Wouldn't you think it's advantageous to sit down, if we're going in the direction of Lewison and Costello and Condon and Faff, to sit down and see what they have specifically for liquor, rather than split them up from the beginning? Because if they offer that service, there may be a benefit to have everything under one. Having said that, I've been happy with David as well, but I don't want to discount the benefits of having it under one firm rather than splitting it up.
You can look at it both ways. It's your call. The thing that I picked up during the interviews, though, was that I don't think they had as much experience in the liquor license issues that.
Perhaps, yeah.
That they, I think they mentioned that during their presentation. But it's certainly worth a discussion with them.
Okay.
We may end up there, but rather than going in that direction and discounting that possibility.
It seems reasonable.
So, the first step then would be to have Bill have a conversation, you know, begin the process of negotiating an agreement with Lewison and Costello at all?
Are we collectively saying we're not opposed to having Dave continue?
No, I'm not opposed.
Okay.
Is that the rule of the board?
No, I'm not, certainly not opposed to it, but I just don't want to discount the potential.
I think you're wise to do that, and look at it both ways, because that way you've at least considered it.
Okay. So, should we take a formal vote on this? Do we need a motion to?
I think the motion would be to approve the firm of Lewison and Costello, based upon what I've heard tonight, to be your town council, and that the board will also consider the option of retaining David DeLuca as liquor counsel following a meeting with the firm of Lewison and Costello.
And just for clarification, when we, we the town engage legal counsel, traditionally there's no contract, per se.
Right.
If we're going in this direction, what are we hanging our hat on with respect to fees? Is that, are we leaving it up to the town manager to negotiate that, or in their original packet, they had a fee structure?
Their fee structure is in their current, is in their proposal. So, my understanding is that if you accept their firm, you're accepting their proposal. Did they have other options?
They had two options, yeah.
I believe they did, yes.
Yep. They had the flat fee and also the hourly rate was. I don't have my spreadsheet with me. I think it was 145 an hour.
Yeah, the hourly rate was 165.
165.
165 an hour.
165, okay.
And they had a flat fee of 5280 a month, which is 63,000 a year.
Billy, have to take a look at our experience and see, you know, which option makes more sense. Maybe we can talk about that.
Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of personal experience with your experience.
We have a file cabinet full of bills that you can look at, unfortunately.
Well, you can just ask Rainie what the run rate was in the last two years, and that'll give you a sense.
And we know what we budgeted for this year.
Absolutely.
And then lastly, duration. You know, as I said, looking at the benefit of the board, but where it changes all the time and politics come in and out, what are we looking for, for an understanding this time with the town council, one year, two year, three year, every year? So, I think it's important when you're sitting down and negotiating the fees in the monthly, which direction, that they have a sense of what this board wants.
Now, our past practice has been to do what?
It was a three-year advertisement, three-year acceptance, and we didn't make it that far. So, that's what we did.
Now, Bill, do other towns have town council at will, or are they always bound by an agreement?
The experiences I've had is that you, it's year to year. It's more or less, it's like an annual type of appointment.
Okay.
I like the idea of having it year to year, because, you know, there are changes and things happen and, you know.
Well, it just keeps everybody on their toes as well.
The only concern I have is year to year. A lot of the things that come through this table takes well over a year to deal with, so if we're changing every year, there's a lot of step-up time and duplication that we, or dealing with no attorney, like kind of where you are right now.
I'm not suggesting we go out for RFP every year, you know, I just think it's an option that you have, basically.
Well, the options, it could be weekly if we wanted to, but I think, I think it's fair to have that discussion with the attorney on our expectations and what their expectations. You know, they may not want something that's year to year, and they may want to come back and say, if they're going to be our town council, this is what they've experienced. Like in Dedham, you've had, what, 15 years? You've had quite a run with an attorney.
Yeah, they've been there, they were there at least two or three years before I got there, and then the whole 12 years I was there was the same firm. And that was a year-to-year basis, too.
So, if a council's coming in and thinking they're only going to be here to year to year, there's not a lot of, it could be a lot of incentive or?
Yeah, if they perform, if they perform, they'll continue to get reappointed.
Or they may say, I might not be here next year, so I'll take some chances, who knows? But I think it's worth a dialogue that the town manager should have.
Well, could we have like a, once a year, as an agenda item, do a quick review on the town council, and if everybody's happy, then that's it? Or if you have some issues, then they could be brought up then? But at least it would be a yearly review, you know?
The board's always, you always have the ability.
Because then we reappoint every year.
Right. Yeah, they always have the ability to. And actually, there was always an action by the board in Dedham, and in Seacock, where they would, where the board would actually have an item on their agenda, which would actually reappoint town council effective July 1st, let's say.
Okay, so, Jenny, do you want to make a motion?
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen approve the choice of Lewison and Costello.
Condon and Faff.
Condon and Faff, as to be the town council for the town of Foxborough, and to have the board of selectmen consider the option to retain David DeLuca for special counsel for liquor issues.
Following a comment, a meeting with the selected firm?
Following a consultation and meeting with the selected firm. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Congratulations.
It's a quick process, isn't it?
It is. We've got a lot of stuff to send out right away, so, yeah, we'll have that conversation tomorrow morning.
And we are right on time. Mr. Yupna? We are going to have a discussion and vote on the MSBA's statement of interest for the borough school.
Again.
Again. Good evening.
Seems like it's an annual occurrence now. We've done it 2000, FY13, FY14, and now FY15. We closed last year, we got down at least onto the list and the shortlist in which we were reviewed, but based on the grouping that we were in, we still didn't make it through the process. So, the only option again is to resubmit. We've got the application complete, but part of the rules and regs are that there are sign-offs by both the board of selectmen and the school committee that need to go in with the documentation. As I stated in the past years, and as it's becoming more and more obvious, just the fact that we are willing to go forward with the process is no guarantee that we will end up getting the statement of interest approved again this year. But it's an ongoing process. The borough school, obviously, 47 years old, major components to it, boiler systems, roof systems, window systems are well past their life. We actually had a major issue with one of the boilers the other day, and basically are kind of having to Band-Aid that to keep it going. But we're, we definitely are on borrowed time. As I said last year, it's getting worse each year. The other side of it is, we also looked at this building as our primary pre-kindergarten, which is basically kids for special, you know, needs that have already been addressed at age three, that need to have some, you know, furthering in their education prior to even getting into kindergarten. And that program itself, we don't really have any rooms in the district that are truly capable for dealing with those kids. So, what the hope was when we were doing the borough, that the two pre-K rooms that we currently have would actually be changed and enlarged so that we'd have full-size pre-K, which would be their own bathroom facilities and everything that you really need with three and four-year-olds. So, that's the program that we've submitted for the last three years. It's basically a renovation and repair with an expansion to, you know, to include the two fully-sized pre-K rooms. As I said, we got close last year, we were actually kind of hopeful that we might make it through. Obviously, to the town and our last approval, which was the high school, we got about 49% reimbursement. So, it's not something we want to do on our own, it's definitely something we want to do with the MSBA's support, and it's obviously in the taxpayer's best interest. So, the, just as a quick thing on the timeline, if, even if this were, first of all, we won't even get approval of what we're submitting until December of FY15. Even if you get that approval, it's another probably six to seven months in the first stage, which again, is not even an approved stage to move forward, it's more of a design and look at your process. So, you're really probably looking at this point at an FY17 financial issue. The only potential thing between now and then would be for doing a study or doing some development of plan issues, and again, they would reimburse you for a portion of that as well. So, this is really not an expenditure in FY15 or FY16 that I see, but our best hope is that they will approve the interests of the town. It's obviously been something that's been discussed at every town meeting we've had for the last three years, so I don't think anybody's surprised that we keep coming forward with it. It is our most, in the town right now, obviously we're moving forward, it looks like with the town hall, but it is the next worst building within the town structure that needs to be addressed, so.
Anyone have any questions about the project itself?
So, how are we gonna, how are you gonna keep a Band-Aid on the boiler for three years?
Well, we'll repair what we need to repair at this point. Fortunately, each one of our buildings has two boilers. You know, you don't need to run full strength on both of them usually. I mean, obviously, when we get down to the sub-zero temperatures we've had recently, you do. But I think, you know, we will do whatever it takes, obviously, to get through at this point. If we get to finally to a point where we have no choice and we have to pull one of the boilers, and that's what we're going to have to do, but still, I would rather spend that money on a single boiler than, you know, try to do the whole thing ourselves and pay for it. You know, the only other option that the MSBA has, which is really not the right option for this building because of its age, is strictly to do a boiler replacement thing, which they will do some granting on. The problem is, you know, you have roofs and everything else that are associated with that, that really need to be worked on too, and you don't want to come back and then start doing work on top of work you just did. It really can be counterproductive. So, we really feel that this is a kind of do-it-all in one shot and get it done like we've done the other buildings, which seems to work very well for us.
Did they have an explanation of why the application didn't move forward the last time?
It solely came down, the explanation they gave is solely based on need. So, if we were down to, and I apologize, I forget the exact number, but it was, there was about 180 programs that were actually entered into the competition. I think it got down to about 40. We were one of those 40, and then they dropped out to down to 20. So, about 50% of the 40 that they looked at, and their basic response is that those 20 had a higher priority, need, than that building did. So, that kind of tells me either they've got some really bad buildings as far as what's out there, or, you know, whatever their decision was. We got a lot of credit for the condition that we kept the building in, the way we maintained it, everything else. Jack McCarthy actually came out on that particular interview. He was impressed with it, but he did see all the issues, and he commented on that. He said our submission was complete, we did the best we could do on that side, so it really came down to 20 other projects were ahead of us.
So, you were encouraged to submit?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Bill, do you want to speak to the vote process?
The wording that you see in there, it's their wording, it's very, very specific. And it basically is saying that, you know, we understand in all ways that they're making no commitment to us, but that we have an interest in moving forward. That's really all the wording is saying, that in other words, that the board of selectmen, the school committee, you know, and the taxpayers effectively understand that this is a project that needs to move forward. The wording has to be basically within your minutes, so it's going to be hopefully approved by you, and that actually gets incorporated in your minutes, and then I get a copy of your minutes certified by the town clerk as part of my package that goes in. We do the same thing with the school committee. It's a very kind of drawn-out process, but they really want to make sure that they've put everything that everybody has said, yes, we understand.
So, do we need to read this, or can we waive the reading?
You can waive the reading as long as the minutes, as long as it reflects that wording in the minutes, so.
Good answer. Any other questions?
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen vote to authorize the superintendent of schools to submit an application to the MSBA for grant funding of the Borough Elementary School renovation slash expansion, and waive the reading of the text in the required form for brevity's sake.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Bill, before you leave, if I could just take an opportunity while Bill is here, to maybe talk a little bit about where we are with the building design. Bill, before you leave, if I could just take an opportunity while Bill is here to maybe talk a little bit about where we are with the building design, town hall design process? Just so you can give a brief update.
Lerner Lad and Bartel, basically the architectural firm that you hired a while back, came in and originally did the first phase of that was to look at what the working group had come up with for square footage, office design, layout, and things of that nature. They fortunately, it looks like they're confirming our numbers are pretty close. They're actually right now slightly under ours, but, you know, they're kind of looking at some different issues, so that may change. But it's nice that it's in the range that we talked about. The secondary thing is they've really started to look at the same type of thing that we had originally done with KBA, which was the adjacencies, what room needs to be next to what, how do the offices lay out, what are the window spaces? You know, what are the customer service areas going to look like? What's the meeting hall gonna look like, and hopefully not the high school? But, so they've actually started to show all of that in just individual rooms at this point. And now they're gonna start to pull together the actual, how that will lay together. They met with Randy, Bill, myself, and we had both the OPM and the architects in there. And we kind of went through all of the different pieces that laid out there. And I think the, I think they're really close. I didn't see any major issues. There were a couple of comments that we made on different things, which I think they, you know, appreciated hearing about. And then the next time they come back, they'll probably be coming back to a full building committee meeting to show more of, okay, here's how we see all this laying out for us. I think they're right on the timeline. They're, you know, very attentive to this project. I think they're doing a good job. And, you know, I think we've been driving home the colonial look, the location. We started looking at where it will sit on the property and how it can sit on the property. So they've got a lot of things that they have to, you know, kind of pull together, but they've been moving along pretty nicely, I think. No concerns.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of the 40B Fisher Street project letter to the state. Bill, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a, with respect to the 40B process, this is the review process that is submitted by the Board of Selectmen as part of the initial site assignment. And what we have done, per your direction and request, is to ask all of our department heads and committees for input. And we received a number of comments that have come back to us, which we, which I have more or less pulled together into, in the form of a letter that will be sent directly to the state. You have available to you a review period that's gonna expire on February 23rd. That was the extension period. So we have a few days to at least to, you know, make further edits as the board may see fit. But this is a draft that I pulled together last week based upon comments that I received. And so I'm open to further comments or considerations from the board.
Do you want to run through this, Bill, so that the public can hear?
Sure.
What the items are?
The letter is addressed to Catherine Lacy, who is the specialist at the 40B Division of Comprehensive Pyramid Program of the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency. And the letter is addressed to Catherine. The Fox Board of Selectmen have solicited comments from various town boards, committees, and departments regarding site considerations for the proposed 40B project presented by the handover company. The board and I respectfully request that you take these thoughts into consideration as you contemplate the site assignment designation for this proposal. First was from the Public Works and Engineering Department. Public Works Department offers the following comments or observations with respect to the Fisher Street development, Fisher Street development proposal. An area-wide traffic study needs to be done to analyze the peak levels of service, level of service LOS, pre- and post-development to account for any adverse loss of service impact of the project. The Fisher Street and Foxborough Boulevard intersections need upgraded signals and installations of 3M Opticom signal interrupts, safety interrupts for police and fire vehicles during emergencies. The Fisher Street and South Streets need to be reconstructed and widened to accommodate peak traffic flows. The sewer and water needs of this development must be analyzed and mitigated to accommodate this development. From the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission offers the following preliminary comments with respect to the proposed Fisher Street development. The commission has observed that the proposed development site has high groundwater levels and intermittent streams, but these concerns are not contained within the State Wellness Protection Act jurisdictional areas. Field survey evidence has identified the presence of intermittent streams on this property that may fall within the Army Corps of Engineers, Army Corps jurisdictional area. The commission has suggested a request for an Army Corps jurisdictional termination be made on these, on these possible intermittent streams should be made. From the Planning Board, the preliminary comments on the Planning Board, who discussed the Fisher Street 40B submission to Mass Housing at its January 8th meeting noted that the site is zoned residential and is on a public road. Based on the information contained in the Mass Housing filing, this site would not seem to be unsuitable for the type of development proposed by the handover group. The board further indicated that once the more detailed filing is submitted to the ZBA, estimated to be in March of 2015, that they will review the plans in much greater depth and will provide more specific comments to the zoning board of appeals at that time. From the Fire Department, specifically the Fire Department submitted the following comments regarding the proposed development. A second aggressive property is preferred, possibly to be located off of South High Street. All street sizes should be built to allow access to all the buildings by the largest piece of fire apparatus, the largest being the ladder truck. Developers should coordinate the planning of their hydrant locations with the deputy fire chief. The developers should provide a detailed snow removal and storage plan. This plan should take into consideration the possibility that emergency apparatus will be able to have adequate access to each of the structures in the event of a response. From the Building Department, the comments were that from a construction perspective, the site appears to be conducive for constructing the proposed project. Building Department will be concerned with making sure that construction methods are consistent with the state building code. We will also be concerned with the heights of the buildings and how they perform to the site. Further details are needed before a comprehensive review can be performed. And that concludes the specific comments. It says, if you or any other member of the 40B review staff have any questions regarding our comments, we would be glad to respond, and thank you for the consideration in this matter. And we have CC'd that to the Board of Selectmen, the Assistant Town Manager, the Public Works Director, Fire Chief, the Building Commissioner, Town Planner, Conservation Agent, State Senator Timmeltie, and State Representative Jay Barrows.
Thank you, Bill.
One detail, if you wouldn't mind looking into. I noticed the zoning board, looking at the building heights more from aesthetics. Fire Department was talking about their largest piece to be able to maneuver around and with respect to where the locations. But there's nowhere in the letter with respect to the building height versus the largest piece of equipment that we have that can get onto the roof. So if you could ask the Fire Chief to take a second look at that and the concern or the point be made that the largest, because this is what's in our jurisdiction, the largest piece of fire apparatus, or the apparatus that we have can reach the roof of that four-story building from the location around it. Other projects I've seen, if that's not the case, the buildings either have to get smaller or there's gonna be some funding for a new piece of equipment that can service the roof.
Very good.
John?
I'll say.
David?
So as you and I discussed, just really laying the groundwork for mitigation. Other than what Jim mentioned regarding the fire apparatus with the ladder height, the only other thing in here that really addresses the site location is the con con comment regarding Army Corps of Engineers. And I think we should, we should push for that. But it's, I mean, it's a good, it's a good pass at potential mitigation to possibly work with the developer. And I think at some point, there should be another meeting between the developer and the neighborhood. Because it's really gonna impact those folks more than other members of the town, so. But this is a good first step.
Do you want to make a comment in it that the Board of Selectmen request that the, that the developer work closely with the neighborhood on the development of this site?
I think so. Absolutely.
And will this letter be made available to the residents in the area?
Sure.
So that they will know what the, what the concerns of the different departments were?
Sure. The question is, who is the right person? I should follow that through. I know there were a couple of spokespeople for that group earlier.
Was there a list of people who were interested in getting information?
I just want to make sure I get to the right people. That's all.
Can you send it out to the director?
Do they send anything to you?
I receive communication from definitely one, maybe two of the neighborhood people there, so I could reach out to them.
Okay.
And just get contact information.
They don't have a dedicated spokesperson to them?
Not that I know of.
Phil Henderson was pretty vocal. He had a meeting with Roger, so he might, actually, you might want to contact Phil first. You may only need one phone call.
Right.
And then the residents were advised to submit their comments directly. Is that correct?
Yes. Good. That's it?
Thank you.
Okay. Take care of it.
Okay. The next item is the vote on the dispatcher's contract, which was just completed.
Thank you. Just a few comments regarding this contract with the dispatchers. This was the first year of the contract with this newly-formed organization represented by Mass Cop. We met with them. It was very amicable. And we decided that for the benefit of the county and the bargaining unit, that one-year contract would be wise just because we needed to, as you build new contracts, we need to feel it out. And, you know, perhaps in future years, we could tweak it and have it be a longer term. The provisions that you need to know that are important here are this contract very closely mirrors the current town personnel bylaw. A lot of the major provisions come out of that. The first thing of note in this contract, as you can see from pages one, two, and three, are there are a considerable amount of management rights that the town retains in this document. We spent a lot of time negotiating about those. It's important to keep those in. And a first contract and not lose that ability. The second thing of note, page four, is that we are authorized to, we are authorizing them to take out union dues. However, there is no agency fee. So for those members who choose not to be in this union, there's no mandatory agency fee to not be represented. One of the things that I want to commend the dispatcher bargaining unit on is that they asked us to tighten up probationary periods and performance standards by performing performance evaluations, so I want to commend them on that. You know, they really care about being professional in their jobs and being held to a standard. A couple of the things that, that you see in here that do deviate from the personnel bylaw are things like uniform allowance, which are more closely aligned with the police contract and equal to what the police officers have, as this group is also required to wear a uniform. Some of the other things that we work closely with the chief on were things that, provisions about shift swaps and scheduling of vacation times so that there will be a minimum disruption to public safety and to the town's operation. There's always an experienced person there. And finally, with regard to a substance abuse policy, there were some edits made to keep that in line with other town policies. So what you see here today, I think, is a really good effort at a first contract. There's also a side letter that is on the very last page that amends some discrepancies in placement of employees who were not given steps for experience after being here for several years. And we negotiated a side letter on that. So this entire document is pretty comprehensive. I think it's in keeping with other contracts where the cost of living increases just 2%. Does anybody have any questions?
Everyone seeing the total cost of the town?
This, this is well within what the town budgeted for cost.
Any questions? So we need a vote to ratify the contract?
That's correct.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the agreement between the town of Foxborough and the Foxborough Public Safety Dispatchers Association, Mass COP, Loco 440, AFABEL CIO.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to thank Mary Beth and Labor Council, Leo Pellican, Freddie Scholz, and the police chief, and all the dispatchers for their cooperation in reaching this agreement, and their work was really well done. So, thank you.
Nice job. All right. Our next item is a discussion on the spring warrant article, so the list seems to have grown a little.
You were on here last week.
Consistent with, just as I just wanted, looking at the process that we have tonight, consistent with how we've done it up to, through the special time it was at, we had things that we all agree are on, things that we want to take off, and things that we wanted more information on, but still want to be, may be taken off. So, or included. So we're at that stage again, so we want to make sure we're consistent with that process that we've used up this point.
So right now, Bill, everything's in place. There is a question now about the Chestnut Green liquor license that Dave DeLuca will get back to you on.
Right. And I did speak to Dave briefly during tonight's meeting, and he did agree with me that that agreement is pretty clear that that's something we shouldn't be, we shouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it unless we negotiated with the owners of that property.
So are you suggesting that we remove item 28?
Yes, that we would, that we would, I would say we would not be able to do that at this point, at this juncture. Let's tell me.
Is that agreeable to everybody? Great. And so then in the category of need more information, first one is the amend sewer and water districts?
In this, in this particular issue, I think there was, there were a couple of items that were submitted by the Sewer Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners. The thought is that perhaps they want to come before you and present what they're, what they're looking for. So you specifically understand what's being requested.
So we can have them on our next agenda?
I would think you want them on your next agenda, yes.
And also, now where we have just approved a new town council, I would suggest that we have the town council look at it just to get another attorney's opinion on the, could be unintended consequences. So if we could, if we could do that.
Sure.
All right. And then Garrett Spillane Road, town acceptance. This was voted on at the Planning Board the other, last Thursday, right, Jenny?
They discussed it.
They discussed it. Did they take a vote?
No, they, they're, no. And I still question why the sponsoring is the Board of Selectmen. It's the Planning Board, right?
It was, I think it was requested that way.
It was requested that the, by the, by the proponent that the Board of Selectmen observed this. But at the last meeting, the board clearly stated that it's traditional that road acceptances come through the Planning Board. So we met with, we had a meeting this week about it, and... And they were supposed to be meeting with members of the planning board. And I think Sharon might have an update on this. But my understanding is that this is clearly not moving forward.
Sharon?
Thank you, Mary Beth. I don't know if the meeting has taken place. I understood the chairman and vice chairman were going to be meeting with the most recent developer who requested the street acceptance. So I don't know the specific outcome of that. But the planning board was very clear that this road, as Jim and David know, lots in Massachusetts are created on, with the required frontage and area, on either a town road, a subdivision road, or a way that's certified as used and maintained as a public road by the town clerk, a historic road. And if it's the last category, used and maintained as a public road, there's a second caveat that the planning board must determine that there's safe access to potential building sites. And in conjunction with making sure that Garrett Spillane Road was built to a standard that a fire engine could get up and down it, there were certain agreed-upon improvements that would be made. The road was never constructed to town standards. It was my understanding, it is my understanding from reading the planning board minutes over a number of years, that the discussion that it was not being constructed to subdivision rules and regs standards, and therefore could not be accepted as a public road, was had a number of times with the initial developers, the current developers, and anyone else who's asked, including the folks that live there, that are as frustrated as everybody else. So we're in a catch-22. It is, for all intents and purposes, a substandard road based on our subdivision rules and regs. But because it's an old historic road in town that the town clerk certified was used and maintained, it was upgraded to the point that it was safe enough. The planning board, in dealing with both Garrett Spillane Road, as well as the other two road acceptances, looked to the way other communities do road acceptances. And they've identified, they've created a policy about what has to happen at what point in time. There's a number of required inspections and reports and information. You know, if someone decided Monday of last week they wanted to have their street acceptance, I wouldn't want to be the one to tell Rich Leslie, he's got to go out and dig up the meets and bounds to prove that they're in there. So typically, this starts before the snow is on the ground. We go out and do the field inspections and make sure that everything that's supposed to be there is there. Planning board staff, the planning board inspector, the DPW, the tree warden. We have sign-offs. We have a public hearing with the residents on the street and get their feedback. And then we come to town meeting with a full and informed opinion as to whether or not the planning board can recommend to town meeting that the street be accepted. So in addition to deciding to move ahead with Mitchell Moore and McNamara and not move ahead with Garrett Spillane Road because it was not built to subdivision rules and regs standards, I've been charged with developing this checklist policy for the planning board to adopt. And I'll certainly share it with Mary Beth so that we all are on the same page about a timeline for street acceptances. And it doesn't catch us all by surprise in the future.
Can I ask a general question? So this was a historic road that was brought up to a level that was considered safe enough at the time. So that was the standard that it was held to?
Right. It had adequate access, as determined by the planning board.
So the difference between that and the other levels?
Our current road standards. There are no curves. It's not wide enough. We're not sure how much thickness of pavement in both the base coat and top coat. We don't know that there was suitable soil under the pavement, the macadam and the gravel, whether it was correctly compacted. We don't know where some of the utilities are. There's a lot of unknowns. And if the town accepted it as a public way, we get good, bad, and everything in between with regard to that street. We have bought a substandard street that may have financial ramifications for the town down the road.
So in short, there's no, there's no as-bills?
There was, an as-built submitted. It is a plan of land that shows the bounds. We don't know what the construction details are, whether it's strong enough or meets anything close to what our standards are in terms of construction standards.
Have we ever had this kind of situation before?
I know that folks on Camp Road tried to get it accepted in the 70s. And town planning board was against it for some of the same reasons. And town meeting did not adopt it. I do not know that we've had this specific problem. A second issue is, we have maybe half a dozen or so of these roads in Walpole, where I served on the planning board. And the lots are measured to the center line of the road. And when the road is accepted by the town and there's a defined taking of 30, 40, or 50 feet, suddenly everyone's lots are that much smaller by the distance from the center of the road to wherever the taking line is. So that, in our case in Walpole, a number of substandard lots have become extremely substandard and imposes really much more hardship on the folks that live there. I don't know if some of the lot sizes on Garrett Spillane Road count land which would otherwise be under the road to meeting their required lot sizes. But there's a lot of issues with the legal side, the construction side, the precedent, and the future financial ramifications. I have enormous sympathy for the folks that live there.
Any questions?
I think the big picture is, you know, the elected board that is qualified, capable, and historically has brought these articles to town meetings, should be the planning board, not the board of selectmen. Say if we go in this direction, we're venturing to something that we just don't have the experience or the capability to deal with. So I don't know why it was shortcutted. Well, discussion for a different day. But I think we either kick it back to the planning board to say, do you guys want to sponsor it? Or we take it off the warrant article?
They did vote not to sponsor it earlier in the year.
So I think we need to take this off the warrant article.
Okay.
Now Sharon, are you planning to re-inspect the road at any time? And this might appear on the fall town meeting? Or is it such a longstanding issue that it's not going to change?
I don't know the answer to that. We do periodically inspect it. We had a catch basin subside and went out and dealt with the developer on that issue. And we have a number of problems with the road ongoing. So we spend a lot of time reviewing the street and what's going on there.
Okay.
So it's definitely not out of sight, out of mind.
But it's in the category of unknown?
In terms of town meeting articles?
No, in terms of whether or not the construction is appropriate and could ever be accepted.
Well, what you can see on the ground, there aren't granite curbs. It's not as wide as a current road and other features. It doesn't have street trees. So the things that you can see on the ground, it doesn't have everything that's required. What we don't know is what's under the ground in any great detail.
I think the assumption can be made that it has not been built to standard until otherwise proven. And I think the other, the bigger impact is, you know, what's it going to do to those folks' lots and make them non-conforming?
If, in fact, that is the case, that part of their lot area is within what would be the roadway right-of-way taking. Too many Rs and Ws. So I agree with Jim that this is something that, do you guys have a lot on your plate? You should make the planning board do their job and have street acceptances come through the planning board. As I said, we're coming up with a procedure so that everybody understands what the timeline is and what the rules are and what the checklist is. And, you know, Gabby, the new staff planner, is working very diligently to get a lot of these languishing roadways completed so we can bring them to acceptance. And we're back in the road acceptance process. But we want to make it rational. We want to do it in a timeline that everybody can live with instead of at the last minute and do it right.
So if you want a road race, you come to us. We'll give you the permit.
Oh, good!
You guys take the road.
Chairman, just a question I have. Is it, so is there any bond left on this property? Or there's nothing, is there anything that can be, can be done to bring it up to today's standard?
If there is any money, it is woefully insufficient. I know they paid an inspection fee. I do not believe they paid a bond. But I do not know that for sure.
What was the timeline of this?
So we're going to pull that?
At least 10 years ago, the process started. And there have been several parties involved with it as different pieces of land were created as lots. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
The next item on here?
Would you want to just vote to take that off right now? So you can edit the list, edit the other list? Just?
Okay, so we have consensus that, consensus that we'll be removing the Garrett Spillane Road town acceptance off.
You want a motion to?
Do you want?
Oh, yeah. I thought that's how we were doing it. We want to move them off. So there's no?
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen remove Garrett Spillane Road town acceptance from the list of warrant articles.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is amend the child safety reappointment criteria. There was just a minor issue on language?
Yeah, I spoke to Mary Beth today and over the last couple of weeks. And this doesn't belong, we don't need to put it on here. I think last week we had talked about taking it off. Yeah, it was resolved.
Okay.
So I would ask for a motion to take this one off as well?
Okay.
Motion? I move that the board of selectmen vote to remove the amend child safety reappointment criteria warrant article.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. And then we'll ask just a formal vote on the Chestnut Green thing, too. We didn't get one on that as well.
Okay.
That was item 28.
Item 28. So you want a motion to remove it?
Yes.
I make a motion at the board's selectmen vote to remove Chestnut Green liquor license warrant article from the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good. Thank you. Any other questions about the remaining parts of the warrant?
I do like this process, though. It's a lot better than it was in the past.
And these will be?
Yeah, we're going to, the AdCom is actually anxious to get these. So our intent is to try and present these as a draft to them tomorrow with the provisor, of course, that we still need to review with town council. And that we'll try to finalize on the language. And we have an actual, especially with, we got the warding, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is Bill's town manager update.
Just a couple of things. Just a follow-up on one item that the board had visited a few weeks ago with respect to the, one of the concerts that had been approved by the board. It was, what was the concert?
Taylor Swift.
Taylor Swift, thank you. So many concerts these days. The Taylor Swift concert, that the board had put a condition on there relative to the language of the, what is otherwise known as the limit on the hours of performance. So that, and based upon my review of that with town council, he's actually issued an opinion on that to me and when I provided to the board as well, that the, that this can actually be included as part of your conditions of licensing conditions, but it can't be done as part of, it's not part of the bylaw. So you can actually include it with the set conditions that you wanted to achieve as part of your licensing requirements. Now, with respect to other concerts that have been approved up to this point, he doesn't advise we go back and revisit those. What he does do, does suggest is that the board develop a regulation that is specific, goes towards entertainment types of venues, that the board adopt officially, that includes those conditions. And then he would apply those similar conditions to each license going forward. So I think it's a cleaner process as well, and it also achieves the goal that you want to achieve.
But until that policy is written and finalized, can we do what we did with Taylor Swift, like make a conditional adding that on?
He doesn't advise you do it because you've already approved those licenses.
No, 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 no. I mean, in future, because I know, I read the paper.
In the future, you can. You can condition it. Yes, going forward, you can condition it.
Yeah, because I know we're going to get another request because it was in the paper. I forget what the concert was.
Yes. He doesn't recommend going backwards, but he said by going forward, absolutely, if you do it with that concert, you can do that going forward.
Right.
But we're going to condition it by referencing an approved policy?
There's approved policy, right.
Okay, so we have to write the policy?
Well, it's part of your license requirements, license requirements for that entertainment.
Well, we have to draft the policy, accept the policy, and then begin to reference it.
And Dave is in the process of doing that for you.
But until that policy is finalized, if we get a request for an event, we can do the same thing we did for Taylor Swift concert?
Yeah, we just can't go backwards and, you know, restructure the license?
Right.
Okay.
All right. So that was the, I also, I mentioned earlier, of course, about the concerns about the winter conditions. Randy has advised me that we're close to hitting the limit in terms of how much we spent so far in this storm. It was about $450,000 that we spent so far in the month of, almost entirely in the month of February. I guess we're not alone. That's, I guess, if music loves comfort in that respect. But there is, it loves company, rather, in the sense that we're obviously facing some pretty significant issues here. And we still will do what we have to do to keep the roads safe and clean. And our DPW crews will continue to work around the clock to get that done. If we need additional funding, we'll provide that, and we'll take care of it as part of the annual operating budget for fiscal 2016. So as it's one, as the board, as may or may not be aware, it's one of the provisions that is allowed in state statute, allows you to forward, to fund it, and then pick it up in next year's funding cycle. So we have, we have the ability to do that, and we will do that if we have to, if we have to.
Bill, has there been any discussion of any assistance coming from the state or the federal government?
There has been. And in fact, and thank you for saying that, but we do have, a couple of the storms were actually declared emergencies by the governor. And we were included as part of those emergency areas. Norfolk County was picked up a couple of times. Particularly, I think, the last snowstorm, where we had about 15, 16, 17 inches of snow. That was included, as was the first blizzard. So we have not heard anything about the second storm. But I know that we've submitted the required information for the first storm. So what we've gathered on the information, we have what we need to submit. And we'll continue to track every storm as they come about. Let's hope that we don't get too many more, because the biggest challenge we face now is where we put the snow. It's a huge problem in a lot of communities right now. And that, fortunately, we still have some space. And that, you know, we're making good use of the space up at Pason Road, except that we may not have, it may not be melted until next August. Based on the amount that we have there, so.
Even though it has snowed on May 8th?
Yeah, that's right. And we don't want to say that too loudly, by the way. So we're hoping that, and also the big concern now, at least where I sit, is how slow solely it melts. Because if it melts too fast, then we're going to have big flooding problems. then we're going to have big flooding problems. And I, and that's another, another issue that we're concerned about going forward. So um, so the key thing is slow melt, slow but steady melt, um, and uh, and that we don't get, you know, a huge deluge of rain, you know, which we've seen in the past in June particularly, in some cases. So we're worried about that as well.
I have a slow but steady melt in my living room right now.
Yes, and, and some people are witnessing that firsthand, unfortunately. So, um, and then there was reference to the fact that we will be meeting with the, with the AdCom tomorrow night. We'll be presenting the, uh, our office budget tomorrow night to the AdCom. We'll run the agenda for that. And um, and the CIP meeting has been moved to March 14th, on that Saturday, so in case anybody wants to attend that. Um, and that will be held here, Randy, is it?
At the library.
At the library. Thank you. So, I guess anybody trying to do that. So those are the key, uh, issues I wanted to mention tonight. Anything else, Mary Beth, you wanted to add?
Nope. Work continues on spilling our open positions, going along well.
We did make an offer of employment to backfill my spot today, and a person did accept, and another great candidate, so I'm very, very pleased. So, okay. All right.
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, any motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.